All righty, good evening, everybody. Tonight's Thursday night, April 21st, 2022, 7:30 PM. This is the Newbury Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Eric Swan, I'm the Chair. We have our Administrative Assistant, Christine O'Prey. We have our Town Planner, Martha Taylor. We have a member, Elaine Baker. We have a member, Mario Canavalli. We have Associate Member, Michelle Wheeler. And we have Associate Member, Jack Kelly. And we have our Liaison from the Planning Board, Larry Murphy. So, in the order of business, I'd like to take Barrett Kaplan, five to Volley Way, first, that the Board is accepting, because he's here on a technicality of the permit of the decision that we previously wrote, which was sort of on a short form, and now we have a more documented decision, which includes some revisions of metrics at the end to cover cases for certain applications. And so I think it's, in fairness, we're making Mr. Kaplan come back on a technicality here. So, the Board's approval. Would you like to hear Barrett Kaplan first?
Okay. Barrett Kaplan, five to Volley Way applicant, requests a special permit finding for the relief from Section 97, 4D, 5D, upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief as may be required under the Town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed used project in order to raise the existing single-family dwelling and construct a new single-family residential dwelling on pilings on the lot at five to Volley Way, on Island Newbury, Assessor Matt U05, Lot 52.
All right, Mr. Kaplan. Want to come forward and explain the modifications to the application?
Sure. Due to the requirement for the flood zone, for the house to be two feet higher above base flood elevation than the initial plan, we added two more feet of steel to the plan to bump two feet. We're still within the limits allowed. And Town Council advised, going through the process again, to get to this point, because the original finding, which was in our favor, couldn't be modified. So, all we did is add the two feet, and we're still in compliance with everything that was previously approved.
Excellent. Can you just give me a minute to check some notes here? If anybody on the Board has questions or comments about this? It's just close to confusing, because your total floor area is 2059, and if you round that up, it's 21 percent. And so, 2059, or 21, or 20.59 percent for the FAR. Do you see that? You following me?
Yeah.
Yeah, cool. Right, so there's the area, there's the roundup, you could round that up to be that number. This is, this is in thousands, when it should be 20.59.
Right.
That's the only thing.
Yeah.
So, I just see one small comma or period to your application in terms of it matching previously. Jack?
I thought it was pretty reasonable last time.
Any comments?
Protection.
Okay. Well, there needs, so there's no more discussion. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody here to speak against the application? No one. Is there a motion? Yeah?
Sure. I'll make the motion to grant the request of a special permit as proposed. The new construction will be improved to, will improve the non-conformity and will be less detrimental to the neighborhood, making the non-conformity site A setback now conforming, and all other setbacks are remaining conforming, an increase in height from 16.1 to 33.6, and a reduction in lot coverage from 19.8 to 14.5.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thanks. It passes.
Are you too busy with something?
Um... We just use yours?
Yeah.
So, you just put the percentage, just the initial left, right, there that you made up. And then Steve would hand that to Martha, who's one of the...
Yes.
Yep. So, we'll have a decision, and we'll go around, and hopefully we can send it out quickly by email, and then sign it, and let you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for following the procedures.
No choice.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Do you get it?
David Daly, 10th Street applicant, is requesting a special permit finding for relief of Section 97, 4D, 5C, O2, upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief as may be required under the Town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed used project. Lot consists of a pre-existing non-conforming condition of two detached, single-family dwellings on a single lot, one of which was destroyed by fire in January 2019. The applicant proposes to demolish the remaining existing family dwelling on the lot and to construct two new detached, single-family dwellings on pilings on the lot located at 10th, 10th Street, on Island Newbury, Assessor Matt U03, Lot 78.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, good evening. Douglas Duchesne from Finnerland Nicholson here, this evening representing David Daly, who is under contract with the property owners to purchase the property, the property owner being Carol De Magna. And I have provided you an authorization from Ms. De Magna to allow me to move this application forward on behalf of Mr. Daly. As was stated, we are seeking a special permit finding under Section 97, 4DD of the Newbury zoning bylaws to allow for the reconstruction of two pre-existing non-conforming structures at 10th, 10th Street. The lot itself is pre-existing non-conforming at 5,688 square feet, and it is non-conforming as to frontage at 65 feet. Also, as you know, the use, two structures on a single lot is also a pre-existing non-conforming use. The last of the non-conformances affecting the lot are that the combined structures provide for lot coverage of 31.2 percent, and the fire is .434. So, those two are pre-existing non-conforming. So, with respect to the front house, which is the house here today that still exists, the house is pre-existing non-conforming as to the front setback at six feet even, and it is non-conforming as to a side yard setback here of 3.9 feet. The proposed reconstructed home will actually have a front yard setback of 7.7 feet, so it's a slight reduction in the non-conformity, but a reduction nonetheless. Also, we are eliminating that pre-existing side yard setback, pre-existing non-conforming side yard setback of 3.9 feet, and the side yard setback of the new house will now exceed 10 feet. So, in all other aspects, the proposed front home will meet all of your required dimensional setbacks, and, most importantly, the home will meet all of the applicable flood zone regulations. So, we are making these flood compliant. The rear building, which is the building that was destroyed by fire in 1919, is, it was subsequently taken down, and the foundation was removed in 2020. However, as determined by your building inspector, my clients do have the right to reconstruct that home under both state and local laws, and that has been recognized by the building inspector in granting us our zoning determination and denial letter, and we have had direct contacts with the building inspector with respect to our ability to reconstruct. So, the proposed, the pre-existing non-conforming structure that was there before the fire was non-conforming as to a side yard setback, it was only eight feet off the side yard setback, and the rear yard setback was non-conforming at a negative .2 feet. So, in reality, it appears that the prior existing structure was, in fact, over, slightly over, the rear lot line. But, that house is going to be, well, the house and the foundation have been removed, and the proposed new home will be moved forward on the lot, so that we will now have an eight-foot rear setback line, which is a vast improvement over negative .2 feet. So, we're reducing that non-conformity. Additionally, the pre-existing non-conforming side yard setback that was existed is no longer a pre-existing, excuse me, no longer non-conforming, as we are making it exceed 10 feet. So, we've eliminated that non-conformity. Another non-conformity that we're eliminating by reconstructing the home is that that home was originally three stories, which, as we know, is not allowed dimensional, not allowed in this zone, in the PIOD. So, we are proposing a two-story home, so that we would be eliminating that what was a pre-existing non-conforming three-story home. And then lastly, as is the case in the front home, the rear home will be constructed to meet all flood regulations. So, in all other aspects, the rear house will meet all of your regulations. Now, in terms of lot coverage in FAR, as I stated earlier, in combination, this use, this two-family use, I guess, is non-conforming as to the fire and the lot coverage. However, in proposing these two new structures, we will be reducing those non-conformities. So, the lot coverage will go from 31.2 percent down to 26.3 percent, so about a 15 percent decrease in lot coverage, which is significant. The far, although I will take credit that we're reducing it, it is a de minimis reduction. We are at .434 now, we'll be at .430. So, a very minor reduction, admittedly, but still a reduction, and I'm not asking you to increase or allow us to increase the FAR in any manner. So, overall, our proposal will not create any new non-conformities. It will, in fact, eliminate at least two to three non-conformities. And again, none of our non-conformities are being intensified or extended either. So, nothing new, nothing being extended, nothing being intensified, but rather reductions and eliminations of non-conformities. Therefore, I would suggest to the Board that the proposed redevelopment will in no manner be significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood or the PIOD, as we all know is the standard for this permit. Now, in support of that statement, I would like to remind us, remind everyone, and this is something I've been trying to follow in all of my projects, and that is to be cognizant of the purpose behind the PIOD regulations. One is to reduce damage to property resulting from floodwaters and to not, you know, have to spend exorbitant amount cleaning up from floods and things like that. As I mentioned to you, both of our structures will be fully flood compliant. So, I do believe we are directly on point with that purpose, that we are reducing potential damages to properties resulting from floodwaters. Secondly, articulated purpose of the PIOD is to ensure public safety. Well, again, I think making these flood compliant certainly is beneficial to public safety, but the fact that these two structures will be redeveloped, meeting all of the current fire energy and building codes, will help to ensure public safety with respect to these buildings existing. Another purpose is to preserve open space. And while we have a very small lot, and there's not a whole lot of open space to be preserved, we are, in fact, increasing, or reducing our lot coverage, which in essence increases the open space on this lot by 15 percent. So, I certainly think we're in direct line with that purpose, to preserve open space. Lastly, limit expansion of non-conforming structures so as to prevent the exhumation of existing problems with density and intensity of use. As I've stated, we are not asking to expand or extend any non-conformities. We are, in fact, reducing non-conformities or eliminating them. We are centering the houses on the lot, so that they will be pulled away from our neighbors, so that we're not increasing the density, or certainly the massing and scaling as it's presented to our neighbors. We're pulling them away, centering them on the lot, so clearly, I think, we are helping to prevent the exasperation of density and intensity of use. And we're not exacerbating any of the existing problems, and that we're meeting all of your dimensional bylaws, and the use is not being changed. Our development will be subject to an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, and so it will be protective of the environment, and will meet the requirements under the Wetlands Protection Act and the local wetlands bylaws, which certainly act to ensure public safety, reduce damage from flooding, preserve open space. So, I think with respect to what we're proposing, we are directly in line with the articulated purposes of your PIOD. Now, with respect to our impacts on the neighborhood, as I've said probably too many times, we are reducing and eliminating existing non-conformities. We believe that this will be an overall improvement to the neighborhood. The new structures will be centered on the lots, pulling them away from the neighbors. The new home will be built in conformance with the newest building laws, energy codes, and fire codes, which will certainly minimize environmental impacts. The new structures will meet flood requirements, which will be protective of our neighbors and the neighborhood in general. As I said, will be built in conformance with an NOI from the ConsCon, which helps with respect to environmental protection, and it actually will improve the environmental impacts on this, that this lot is currently having by eliminating those environmental impacts. As you know, that the new structures will increase the value of this property and those of the neighborhood in general, which will also generate improved tax revenue to the town. So, I think on balance, when we look at what we're proposing to do with regard to the purposes of the PIOD, and with respect to the regulations under your bylaws requiring that we cannot be significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood, I think I'm not unreasonable in stating that we will be in no way significantly more detrimental, but I think if you look in on balance, we will actually be beneficial in many, many ways to the neighborhood. So, again, my personal position is that I think my clients have done a good job of, you know, while on one hand, you know, wanting to redevelop the property and realize some economic value, they've also done a great job of looking at your bylaws, looking at the purpose and intent, and meeting them by reducing and improving the situation overall. That, thank you for your time. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great. Thank you.
The Board, anything?
Questions? Just a few questions on the front existing house and setback. You have 10 feet at the back of the house from the side.
Yes.
But you have a deck in the front. And what's the difference between the deck and the property line?
Actually, you mean this deck here?
No, the deck right in front says...
This? Because this deck is proposed to be eliminated. So that our setback from the property line to this little, this little deck in the back here, it may even be a step, is 10 feet. From the actual corner of the house, structure is 12. And, yeah, these decks, as shown here, are to be eliminated. The only structure that'll be is along this dock line, and then this stairway here. So, we will meet the 10-foot minimum.
And the only other one I also had was the front step?
Yep.
Is there an additional step before the 7.7?
No, I think that too represents an existing structure that's to be removed.
Okay. This one was blacked out there.
It's hard to see with the shading.
Okay.
I have a question. The footprint of the building that was in the fire, the footprint?
Yes.
Are you increasing it? How do we know? We really don't.
No, I think we have proposed, we have shown on our plan, and I'm happy to report that the, before that foundation, that structure was raised and the foundation was removed, they actually had a survey done, so that they had the size of that footprint. And let me just check my plans. Yeah, we do have a copy of the assessor's plan for that, of what that foundation was. And if you look at our plans, we do, we do provide the footprint, but I think your question is, do we have dimensions on the footprint?
Yeah. Because according to this, in like catastrophe, you shall not be allowed to enlarge or extend. You're allowed to rebuild, but you're not allowed to do that in the PIOD district.
You mean with respect to a catastrophic?
Yeah. Or, yeah. Right now.
Right. So, so what we're doing, in essence, is we are taking credit for the footprint that existed, and I'm asking you for a permit, special permit, to allow us to reconstruct that existing structure under your PIOD bylaws.
So, there's two sections, Elaine. One is the, which is catastrophe or demolition building as of right. So, if you wanted to rebuild the exact same item, you could build it as of right. And then Section F is catastrophe or demolition rebuilding after a finding, which allows the non-conforming, singular, two-handed residential structure may be demolished and or rebuilt, demolished and rebuilt, or rebuilt after destroyed or damaged by a catastrophe so as to exceed the total volume of all demolished or destroyed structures.
Yeah. Number four. Yep. So, it was existing is 866, and then proposes 649.
Yeah, but it's D, D4.
Existing is 866 square feet, and then proposes 649 square feet.
Not, not, I mean, it's a, excluding singular two-handed.
Right, so it's, but it's not, it's completely singular two-handed.
Yeah, but it says, "Non-conforming uses in structures within the PIOD shall not be enlarged or extended."
Also, I have just got some information, and if you look at the pictures...
Non-conforming uses.
Yeah. It's marked.
If you look at the pictures, this represents the footprint of the prior existing home. It has 866 square feet. This dark box represents the footprint of the proposed home at 649 feet. So, it is actually, the rear home is actually, the footprint's getting smaller. I will point out, though, that the footprint of the front home is getting slightly larger, but on balance, we're just reducing it, just, you know, the total culmination, just a small amount. Did that answer your question, though, with respect to the regulation on the rebuild?
I'd like to compliment Mr. Duchesne and his client on repeatedly saying you were going to comply with all the, excuse me, flood control and building regulations. And we hear that all the time, and I guess my observation is, were there any other options?
No, but the question is...
It always seems a little disingenuous to me to take credit for something that you're required to do. And we hear it all the time, and you just happen to be the person presenting it on the day, that I noted that it aggravates me.
Oh, I'm sorry. But I will, I will explain to you why I take credit for that, and that is because one of the purposes of your PIOD is to encourage and to require, you know, a, let me just get the words, I don't want to mistake, reduction in damage to property resulting from floodwaters. So, whether or not we're doing it because we're required to do so, or we're just being incredibly beneficial, it does reach, it does go to the purpose of your PIOD, which is to protect against that. So, I don't know any other way to tell you that I'm meeting that intent by making the house flood. Now, if we weren't required to do so by law, I would probably...
Surely we wouldn't.
Well, maybe not, but I would still have to be able to come into this board and present how whatever we're doing is meeting that purpose. So, it's almost like it's saying, even if you weren't required by the law to do it, show us how this improved building will help to reduce damage. And there are things you can do short of, you know, raising the house completely to help with floodwaters. We've done flow-through, you know, some flow-through basements, we've done fencing in particular manner that wouldn't impede. So, I do agree with you, sir, that we are taking credit for something that we're required to do anyways, but I'm using it as an example of how we're ultimately meeting this purpose. Same with the building materials. You are correct that we have to meet building code. We do have a choice on the quality of materials we use, and so, you know, when we do use high-end materials, we want to let you know. But same deal, while we have to meet the building code, it's also showing how we're ensuring public safety, which is required of your PIOD. So, I do apologize for aggravating you.
Nice comeback. I get aggravated easily.
I'll tie it down, play it next time.
Was there a concern with the Conservation Commission? I read somewhere in the document...
Sure, we've been to Conservation. They had some concerns. They asked us to reduce our parking. We had originally showed pretty much parking all along here, you know, and... We had originally showed pretty much parking all along here, you know, and all here. Conservation felt it was excessive, so they've asked us to reduce it. This plan shows that reduction. And what, what results is that now all of these areas here, all the way along here, in here, and yeah, just mostly that, is now all going to be re-vegetated. So we're preparing a new plan for the conservation commission, for their next hearing, reflecting all the changes that they asked for, and we did that.
Was that the only one for the driveway?
What do you mean?
Was that the only change that they had asked?
Oh, no, no. They had asked for, I, I think some other changes with respect to plantings and restoration and the materials we were using. But as far as structural things that would impact our plan to you.
Right.
It was the parking, and this reflects it. We, we, we're.
We're.
No, they had some good points.
Okay. I got a question. So in the back, you're at the front stair.
Yeah.
To the house. So, you know, the rear setback is 10 feet. So one of the things I would say is that in terms of stating what the setbacks are, you meet the setbacks except for the rear and the front. That you have a, you put proposed setback in the back, which should be 10 feet, and you have a 7.7 setback in the front, which should be 20 feet unless you can show in your lot line this established.
Well, and exactly, in both those cases, recall that the previous rear setback was negative 0.2 feet. So while we are only pulling out to eight, we're not eliminating the nonconformity, we're just making a substantial improvement. Same was true for the front setback. So I make sure I have my numbers correct. Our existing front setback on the front house is only six, six feet.
Right, so what, what are you?
Absorted at that.
You understand what was existing. You're saying that it would be favorable if that met the requirements of 10 feet. You say you're, you're building on the lot, and I think the issue here is you're one of the few, if only two structures on one tiny lot in the neighborhood. Are there any other lots like this? When we talk about what is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, we're, we're thinking of, of the rest of the neighborhood. The site plans typically only show the lot, but there is no information here presented about what the rest of the area around this proposed lot is and what those houses and size of houses are. And we've been through this before in terms of the requirements of what the P I O D lays out specifically for allowed uses and the dimensional requirements set forth, and then what is deemed to be, you know, substantially not more detrimental or as to not exacerbate the, the conditions of the lot or the neighborhood. So in the case of this, which is unique, the question is, is the lot already overtaxed with two structures and are you in keeping with the neighborhood? I'd like some information as to, to that.
Well, I, I am not aware of any other lots in the neighborhood that have two structures. I'm not. That's, I'm saying they're not there. I'm not aware of it. And, and I guess I'm a little, I, I, we are starting at a, at a base of a pre-existing nonconforming. So if we were to not change any of the nonconformances, and if we weren't raising the height, I think we could, you can do, you can build by right. What we've tried to do here was to eliminate all of the nonconformities that we could. Again, we've eliminated the side yard nonconformity here and the side yard nonconformity. We've eliminated the previous nonconforming side yard setbacks. And in the front and the rear nonconformities, we made every effort to improve them the best we could. And, you know, so we've gone from a negative 0.2 to eight. But I, I'd like to point out too, that that eight is at the very closest point. And as you can see, the lot line and the home get larger. So I, I, you know, at some point, maybe five or six feet to the left, we, we're, we're meeting or exceeding that 10 feet. Given that, that angle of the lot line, I, I guess we could, we could rotate the house a bit and.
Should we potentially shift?
The house this way just to get 10 feet?
Should we? Bring it forward. Bring it forward. Right, and that is.
But you may just twist it just a little bit and move it forward.
Yeah.
But this one, you know, we don't want to push it back. How can we get these houses too close together?
Right, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, again, while I think reducing the nonconformity is, is always beneficial in keeping with the, the intent of the P I O D, we're certainly not exasperating, extending or creating new nonconformities, we could take a look and see if by slightly moving the house forward a little, perhaps just changing the angle, we could get the 10 feet from that one. So that's a possibility.
The, the essence is, is that there are listed conventional requirements, and to understand what you're proposing, whether it was existing or not, in terms of what the neighborhood consists of, we're always trying to follow the guidelines and the bylaws and interpret them so as to improve the sites and to remove the existing nonconformities because that's the intent of the bylaws. If we had, if every lot didn't have any nonconformities on it, then everyone would have it by right.
You know, I understand, and again, I believe in reducing that from negative two to, negative 0.2 to eight, we are making every effort to reduce that. It, it's just not possible to eliminate all. Now, as I said, we will take, I will take a look. I will take a look and see if we can't do that. But the, with respect to the front setback, we have to be very careful, we have to be very careful. We need this stairway in order to get, you know, get up to the house because these are going to be elevated, as you know. And, and we do have a concern about putting these houses, pulling them too close together. We've tried to maintain a minimum of 15 feet between the buildings. And, you know, to the extent we, we move this one a foot forward and maybe tweak it a little, we're gonna, we're gonna lose a foot. To push this one back another two feet, now I just think we're getting too close. So in that instance, I believe that the best we can do is to reduce the nonconformity and not eliminate it.
So, so are they 15 feet away right now? That was one of my questions.
Yeah, it's like 15.5, 15.6 feet.
And what were they originally, except for the start of the fire?
A little bit. Oh, yeah, but not much. If you look, the stairway, so really, probably pretty close, but I can give you a measurement on that.
When was the, the fire?
2019.
And what, what was the, what was the month?
January, I believe.
And do you know when the building inspector's decision was to deem it unsafe?
I do not. August of 19. And it's my understanding that the building was raised and the foundation was removed in August of 20. So theoretically, two years would be measured from the, you know, from the time it was taken down. We're still within that period. However, we discussed that with the building inspector. We've discussed, he, he mentioned to us that the, you know, the COVID Extension Act bought us an additional 430 some odd days to that. And he has already indicated a willingness to approve an extension if one is ever necessary. But I do believe that the COVID Extension Act buys us well in excess of 400 days, so we are still, even if you were to count from the day of the fire, we're still within our two-year limitation on the COVID Extension Act. If you measure it from the day that the, I'm sorry, if you measure it from the day of the determination of non-havocability, we're well, we're within it. And if you count it from the day of, that it was actually taken down and the foundation was removed, we're, we're still within that timeframe without COVID Extension Act.
Did you, did you submit an assess, assessors card for the previous, for the existing? Like, how many bedrooms are the existing? We don't have any existing plans to show how many beds.
So we did, so we talked to the building inspector about that.
Yeah.
It was two in the back, one in the front, but under the P I O D, he already authorized us that you can go one and two, you can go one and.
Yeah, so we had one and two. We're going to two and three.
Right. This is zoning, but is this, is this a development for rental or is the owner planning to live on the premises?
They're just going to be sold for, for residential use.
It's going to be sold as one lot?
Um, I don't know if there's an indication of condominiumizing or not. I know, I can ask.
I think I know, it started as, is he going to move in here? Because he got an offer in his house. If doesn't know who go for it, he thought it might be under.
Okay.
So he might live there.
Yeah, so there is a potential right now that the builder is going to live here.
Yeah, it's not a zoning thing, but it's just the intent of what, what's, what's going on on the property. And can you clarify with this grayed out area, is there parking intended all on the side here?
There will be an ability to park here, storeboat, whatever. That was one of the discussions with the, with the conservation commission. We have two parking spots under here. And we have, well, theoretically, you could fit two stacked spots, but with this, we can clearly have two, meet the minimum two car requirement.
Okay.
I know stacked parking, tight stacked parking under a building is not generally the best situation, so.
The state and the houses were closer, but we've had that discussion in the past about where parking goes and parking up against the edge of the property line. Some people take an issue to that. Okay, so I do have some additional sort of questions that in terms of discussing with the building inspector, in terms of how he allowed permitting the COVID Extension Act and what that means. So at this point.
Would you like me to get, well, I can do, I can do a couple of things. I can get you a statement from the building inspector with respect to that, or I can have him provide us the extension, which he's already indicated he'd be willing to give it to us if, you know, if that COVID Extension Act.
I'd like to contact him myself on that.
All right.
Anyway, that's, that's one issue.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to get you some additional photographs and plans, providing you information on the neighborhood and the relevance of the other buildings? And I'd be happy to do that.
In the context of it. Yes. Any more board questions?
I mean, and the only thing I was thinking about was, you know, you had mentioned the P I O D and the purpose of the exasperation of existing problems in density and in intensity. And, you know, going from 14 feet to 30, almost 35 feet in height on one building and going from 25 to 35, it's a little bit more intense.
I, I won't disagree with that. I can't. But again, in terms of intensity, the fact that we're staying within your height limitation, I think is a reflection of the fact that the, you know, the town, it's felt that as long as you were under that, you wouldn't be creating those kinds of problems. And of course, as you know, a good percentage of that is due to the, the pilings.
Mario's point, it's really pronounced on the drawing of the picture of the fire. And it's a, more like a one and a half than a, than a two-story house. And then we got, you know, with the roof deck, a three-story. I know what he means behind it, but a really significant change in character.
Well, I'm going to be happy to provide you some, some photos of the neighboring homes because some of those are equivalent in height to one of them.
It looks like they're on top.
It's just a render. It's on the site plan. I don't know more board questions, and I'd like to open it up to the public and I'd like to see if there's any.
Dimensions of the homes.
Keep looking, looking back, there's some. Keep going. Where's that? Okay. Lynn, you good? Okay. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to the, to the public. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of the project? If you'd stand, if you'd stand and state your name and address when you, if you, when you're called. Okay? There's no one in favor? I mean, there's, yeah, there's no one in favor. Is there anybody opposed? Okay, so we'll just start here and work our way back. So the gentleman in the blue, please.
My name is Jerry Shapiro. I'm the owner of 16, 18th, 10th Street. And I, at the hearing, as I have a number of issues, if I may. The first is parking. As we all know, streets down the mountain are very narrow. There is only enough room for one vehicle to go up or down that street. This is particularly important to the homeowners beyond 10, 10th Street as we need the road to be completely clear for ambulatory service, fire, delivery, postal service, any type of transport up and down. I believe that the gentleman just said that this stacked parking isn't ideal. It took to jam two houses into one lot like that and to have a minimum of four cars there would be tight as it is. Plus, we're not even thinking about visitors. They could be family, friends, children, coworkers. That road, and it may not be an issue, but it's, could be, needs to be completely clear. And I don't know if we have that here. The other issue that you brought up, or a number of issues, is that having two structures on one lot where there was one main residence before and an accessory unit, dwelling unit in front, which is standing right there, leaves it with no room whatsoever. It does not fit into the neighborhood at all. The other thing I wanted to mention, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that how I understand that the existing standing structure is an accessory dwelling unit. And 9710, section 8 says that for approval for accessory dwelling unit requires that the owner of a record must occupy one of the dwelling units as his or her primary residences. So that means, if I'm reading, if I'm, no, if I'm reading this correctly, is that the owner of the primary residence, which is the building that, that, that had the fire, would be the owner of the dwelling as well. Now, what I'm hearing here tonight is that they want to turn one lot into two separate lots and sell each unit as an individual house. And if that is correct, then that is definitely against the bylaws that are in place right now. So it is my feeling, unless they can prove otherwise or show otherwise, that this would not be in favor of the neighborhood. It would be done outside of the bylaws. And there is a real issue about traveling up and down, I wrote.
Understood your, your concerns, and there is a difference about somebody creating an accessory apartment on a lot which is either within or detached from the primary unit. There is also in terms of the, of the Plum Island P I O D overlay district, which is There is also in terms of the Plum Island P I O D overlay district, which is 97-4D, number five, F. A catastrophe or demolition, rebuilding after a finding, a non-conforming, single or two-family residential structure may be demolished and rebuilt, or rebuilt after destroyed or damaged by a catastrophe so as to exceed the total volume of all demolished or destroyed structures on the locus and/or exceed the height of the tallest demolished or destroyed structure on the locus upon a finding by the board. And then there are four conditions. Number one, such structures shall be rebuilt not more than two years after such a finding. Such period may be extended for one year for good cause, shown upon the written request of the building inspector. So we've asked the building inspector for determination of the two years and if there's a COVID extension that the building inspector can point to.
I think, if I may interrupt for a moment. I think that what I would like to hear an explanation on is the fact that we have one lot and there are going to be two buildings, two houses on that lot and there are going to be two different owners.
So, I haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
Sorry. And the question was brought up about who was gonna live there, I asked the question. The question was, you know, are they going to be sold together as one lot? The question came up with condo, I don't know how the bylaws react to that and so that's a, that is a question that will need to be determined. That's open at the moment, I don't know by right that you can just condo any property under the zoning for two separate owners on one lot. So item number two is such findings shall be made only upon the determination that proposed alterations to the non-conforming structure or uses shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structures or uses to, structures for uses to the neighborhood or the P I O D. So the requirement is that it's not more detrimental to the existing non-conforming structures or to the use of the neighborhood and the P I O D. So there's two things that need to be met under that one. The rebuilt structure shall not contain more than the total number of bedrooms in all demolished or destroyed structures on the locus, provided however, that one additional bedroom may be created where the total number of bedrooms before the catastrophe or demolition was one or two, was one or two and a bedroom, sorry, or. Provided however, that one additional bedroom may be created where the total number of bedrooms before the catastrophe or demolition was one or two and a bedroom had not been added under 97-4D, 5B. One additional bedroom. So. So that is a question, Mr. Duchesne, that if you had one and two, you have three and you're looking for five, that you're getting an extra bedroom per the total count, for the total number of bedrooms before. So that is also an interpretation in terms of number of structures versus what was assumed to be a structure that had X number of bedrooms and then the allowances here to add a bedroom. So that's a question.
And that would be a question for the building inspector?
Or town council indoor gold.
So we did have that part of the building inspector.
We did, we thought, that's why I'm saying, we did, I did ask that question. And I made it clear in my request for zoning determination as to what we were doing.
Understood, still the question.
Yep, no. I understand.
So that's, that's the, that's Section F, catastrophe or demolition, just reading it in full to partially answer your, okay, your question.
I just, I just think one last thing.
Yes.
It would be really nice to have a beautiful, modest, single-family house there rather than two units. That's it.
All right, the next person.
Can we see a drawing of exactly what they're gonna look like?
Could you state your name and address?
Oh, sorry, I'm Christine Florio from B C N, Indiana, Nevada. And I wonder if we can see like a drawing of what their proposed to look like when they abandoned two buildings.
Let me just check if this is colored. I have a smaller one if you, that is colored. I'll check to see if that one's colored, if you like it.
Okay, I can see it from here, that's, yeah. Okay.
No, I'm sorry, it's not a color.
Oh, that's okay, I saw that one. Okay, anyways, from my reviewing of the laws and whatnot, the way I understand it is they have a right to completely rebuild what was there with the same footprint, obviously not on someone else's property like what was there, but to use that same footprint, but not go any taller than what was there, unless they get the special permit. And I am strongly opposed to this special permit to them going that much taller. If they wanna build what was there, fine, but to go that much taller, that becomes very, makes it very detrimental to the neighborhood as opposed to what was there. That's a big difference to go add that much height. And the zoning laws that were put in place for a reason, the Plum Island Overlay District law specifically states its purpose is to ensure public safety, which if they go that much taller, that becomes a really big fire hazard because up at Plum Island, you get the big winds. When the house on 20th Street burnt down, houses beside it, their spinal siding melted, I mean, they got all were damaged by that. The high winds on Plum Island, those houses tall like that, close together like that, that's a complete public safety hazard. To me, you should have one house there, that would be okay, it'd be furthering from neighboring houses and wouldn't be two houses so close like that. Public safety, preserve open space. He says there'll be less, there'll be more open space because there's less, a little less space on the ground, but open space is also air space. I mean, if you have a whole bunch of tall buildings, there's a lot less open space in the neighborhood than if you have shorter buildings. It's just more congested, more dense, more intense use. And then the other purpose of the Plum Island Overlay District law is to limit the expansion of non-conforming structures, so as to prevent the exasperation of existing problems with density and intensity of use. This is totally not limiting the expansion of these structures, they're really expanding them to go up that tall. A special permit may be authorized if the reconstruction shall not be more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure, which I would agree would say they wouldn't be. More taller houses close together greatly increase the risk, especially on Plum Island, where it's windy, as I said. The area is already very densely populated. Bigger and more houses bring more people, more traffic, more water usage. Two tall houses close together on such a small lot in a densely populated area, it's like a disaster waiting to happen. If they wanna build a house 35 feet tall, which like they said, that's allowed under the Plum Island Overlay District, but that's intended for one house on one lot. If you wanna build one house 35 feet tall, that's one, 35 feet tall, that's one thing, but to have two close together that tall, it's a whole different story. So I am strongly opposed to any special permit for this project. I oppose a special permit just because someone wants to build bigger for a bigger profit. Granted, one in this case would set a bad precedent and special permit should not be handed out arbitrarily, cause then you have to be concerned about favoritism, favoritism issues and whatnot, like, if there's a special reason for a special permit, fine, but just because somebody wants to profit more by having two houses instead of one, I don't think that's a valid reason to be giving them a special permit. I think that our project should comply with the current laws which were put in place for purpose. And if they wanted to build 35 feet tall, I think they should do so under Section 97-4D, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask who that was so I can put it in my notes? I don't know if she identified herself.
She, she did, I got Sandy, pre-Sandy Way.
Christine Florio, pre-Sandy Way.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the back there?
Good evening, Jim Woodruff, Attorney Paul O'Beag, 390, West Wilson Street, Worcester, Massachusetts. On behalf of the owners at 912th Street and 1310th Street. Quite frankly, I believe that the engineer who, and I haven't seen the latest plan here, but I believe that that is erroneous, the plans and the dimensions they are showing, and I'm gonna profit, and I did give this to my brother earlier today, but I'm gonna give you an instrument survey. This basically, I may have more than one here copies, but this shows a totally different encroachment amount that was actually put in effect. And this was done by a survey firm and you'll see the back of the lot. And basically, that addition that was on the back of the house that's encroaching, and let me, let me give you a little bit of background, just have a rapid look. This, my client basically purchased this lot from the town of Newbury, a public auction in approximately 2013, and that would be Lot 137. And basically, when they purchased it, it was represented as a lot, there were no indications of encroachments. After the fact, we did see the encroachments, everything to date has been removed. However, in looking at the permitting, and I had the building department do extensive research today and the last month or so to see if there was ever any permits granted for that structure. The only application they found, and I've got a copy here for the board, is one that was dated 5/15/86. And it was, it was basically just an application. You'll note on the second page, it was never signed. And all it said on that permit, and I'll also enter that into evidence through Mr. Chairman, what the second page said of that plan, it was very specific. It said, raise existing dwelling unit with new concrete block foundation, okay? That's not what happened, okay? And you might say, well, what happened here? Why, why was the permit actually applied for and someone checked off the blocks approved, yet it was never issued? And I confirm this with representations from the Newbury Building Department. So that, that was never actually issued, there was no permit issued for that, but more importantly, the actual, the background on this is the person who applied for that permit was also an inspector. And he was in another town, entering to evidence both of his licenses as a inspector for, well, those are plumbing license and a gas license, but that was the individual who owned the property at the time. And so this should be an investigation on how this was allowed to proceed and how they allowed this building to be constructed on the town of Newbury's land, okay? But the reason it's, it's important now, tonight, is because they're using this in their FAR calculation. And I wanna get back to that because he was saying a negative two, it's not negative two, significantly more than that. How can they take advantage of that area that was never owned by them, okay? It was the town of Newbury's land. And then if you look at this, when we look at those calculations tonight, and I think I'm gonna have to review, cause I haven't seen them on the initial plans, but from looking at this, the building, the two buildings, on building on Lot 1, we had a total of roughly 465 feet of lot coverage. On building 2, we had a total of, assuming that we even look at the full, you know, plan the way it was, is 1165. So if you take 1630 divided by the total lot coverage of 5688, I only come up with lot coverage of .29, unless I'm discalculated. So I would suggest to Mr. Chairman that someone recalculate these numbers based on the assessors records, because I'm using these spreadsheets from the assessors office and that's how we calculated, so that's a .29. And then as far as the fire coverage for the total building structures, if you have a 465 on 1 and you have 1165 on the second house, and then you have an additional 252 square feet on the second house, that brings you up to 1882 divided by 5688, that's a .33 coverage. So what they're showing, I'm not sure how they came up with those numbers, and I know there's gonna be plan revisions, or they're talking about some plan revisions, but quite frankly, they don't mesh with the numbers that are on this application tonight. So I'm just, you know, suggest that those numbers be verified by maybe your building inspector to confirm, to see where they're coming up with these specific numbers. The other thing is, it's easy to say that there was two additions, I'm also gonna give into evidence, two separate photographs that were taken back in the 80s and 90s, which showed that structure and how initially it was put, it was extended, it was a concrete foundation, then the picture on the upper right-hand corners will actually show that after that, they further extended it on unpermitted, unlawful construction on the town of Newbury's land, and that was shown in the second photograph. So I have two short photographs to enter into evidence here that show the upper right-hand corner of that house being, with the foundation being put in, the concrete blocks, and then a further photograph showing that they extended that up through the columns on that. So my point here is, that definitely should not, that footage should not be used in their calculation for square footage in this dwelling. You can't build a building on town-owned land for that portion, that's gonna be backed out of their, their calculation. You know, first of all, it was unlawful construction and second of all, it wasn't on their property, their deed of property here.
So these photos are taken from 12th Street looking.
Exactly, and they were taken in the 80s and 90s.
How many square feet do you think you're talking about on the?
It's not a lot, okay? But the question becomes is, if in fact, the impact on that, when you guys are considering this project, wasn't illegally extended further on that lot line, they had been a negative two. That could have been done, we, we think it's about an eight-foot by 26-foot addition that was put on there without any building permits, it was extended beyond that back line, that's what it looks like. Because the old logic is that this was built in 1920, it didn't have that type of square footage, and that's what we assumed. We didn't own the property at the time, that particular property, the town of Newbury owned it, but we did own some other properties, so we were aware of construction that was ongoing in the, in the area. Like I said, the reason it's important now is the calculations in the square footage and just to touch on the, the real thing, we're not against building by any means, but I think quite frankly, if you pay a lot that's 5688 square feet or whatever, it's above an eighth of an acre, it makes sense. If they are in fact grandfather, you wanna extend their grandfathering because they have two structures, join the buildings together, don't leave them separated, because if you leave them separated, there's high risk of fire on Plum Island. I can tell you, there's been, I've been here since 1967, okay, living and residing on Yana, and I can tell you that there's been dozens of fires and they're wind-wip fires. If they start from the exterior, it's almost impossible to put them out, even with the warden out, by the time they get out, Larry Dawes' house burnt on 20th Street, that was a Sunday or Saturday morning, it was a beautiful Sunday day, when they called those fire teams, by the time they got there, the whole house was in flames from the exterior, it was just spread out. You have two houses this close together, there's no need, reason to do it, you can still get the two units, their grandfathered as the use, so why not just join it into one structure and conform to the, you know, if they, if they have whatever they have there, I would leave their grandfathered on the square footage. But what I'm seeing with the numbers here, and I also asked to show, what about the walkways, what about the decks, what about the patios, all of that, because that's gonna follow to the conservation requirements, but you guys should know, if you're issuing a special permit tonight, we should see all that shown as far as what's the replication on beach grass? What, what is the, a complete project, you know, proposal so that you can make that analysis when you do and decide whether or not you're gonna grant a special permit? But at the end of the day, we, we just wanna see that the code is met and the key here is public safety. No one wants to see more fires on Plum Island. Why, and I do have, and I can get the board some of those pictures, you've got a nine-foot structure, you blew it from nine feet up to 35 feet and the, and I bet you different, that other building was not three full stories, it was a basement, and I have photographs on the fire, it will show you, and it was two stories over, they went one full story up and then they had a smaller roof on the third floor. So it was really considered from an insurance standpoint, the legal definition, it was a two-story building with a basement, some of which may have been finished off, but it was a concrete block basement, I have photographs that I can profit to the board that will show that. So we're not dealing with a three-story, we're dealing with a one-story building and we're dealing with a two-and-a-half story building.
Understanding what you, you said in previously discussing the difference between 8.8 and 10 feet, that technically every property has the right to build within 10 feet of the property line. If everybody built within 10 feet, then all houses would be a minimum of 20 feet apart because everyone was 10 feet from the property. So in terms of risk of public safety and, and having everything at a minimum distance, that's where the 10 feet and wanting to get to the 10 feet comes from. Good points about the, the housing and maybe putting them together and that then also speaks to the P I O D. And that then also speaks to the PIOD in terms of what FAR lot coverage are trying to do in terms of controlling in a proportionate type of way, the size of structures per the lots that they exist on. That, that's stated in here, and it's also stated as to be not more detrimental to the neighborhood in taking into account what is existing out on Palm Island. So you've heard your point about the non-conforming. Good questions from building inspector about what, what was shown. I mean, you submitted a survey, we can take that into consideration and understanding.
Mr. Chairman, just one other point. Under plan, it was submitted not by the attorney, but by the engineering firm. You're going to see, did they show a line, your property line, that's an ad, a diagonal line on the back? That's not accurate. There's a square line here. So I'm not sure where this engineer came up with this information. Because that plan is not accurate, and it does not conform to the engineered, you know, certified plan that we submitted tonight showing any approach.
So we can ask Mr. Chairman, I mean, he's just got a fair amount of property on Palm Island.
Could it, Mr. Chairman, through you, could I answer or at least address a couple of the points that both you and Attorney Novak have raised?
Sure.
Real quickly, and, and I, I will recognize the fact that Attorney Novak was kind enough to send me over copies of his information, and we have been exchanging information and discussing his concerns. I, I, I don't know if I can agree with the, the concept that putting these two buildings together by joining them is somehow reduces fire hazards. Because if, if one of these buildings catches fire, the other building is some 15 feet apart. And as we saw on this very lot, when the rear house burned, you know, fortunately, I'm sure it was due to the efforts of the fire department, you know, the front house, which was approximately 15 feet away, didn't burn. So whereas if they were joined together and one of the units, there was a significant fire, I mean, aren't you, isn't it assured that the entire structure of two units would burn? I mean, I think if they're connected, you have less opportunity. And a fire on a structure of that size together, I would think creates a stronger blaze that could have impacts on, on neighbors. So I, I'm not sure that I necessarily agree that putting the buildings together is an improvement with respect to fire.
Mr. Duchene, I'm sorry, but the separation of the buildings is a building code issue.
Right.
And it's not a zoning code issue. But it is a concern of the neighbors and the neighborhood of structures being close together. So that, that's how I'm understanding the point, or the point made as opposed to, you know, building code that says all structures must be 10 feet apart or...
Right. But if this board is going to consider that concern being detrimental to their neighborhood because it's a concern of theirs, when in fact, we're meeting the very fire codes and laws, I, I don't see how the board could conclude that that's a detriment to the neighborhood.
The board hasn't concluded, the board is just...
All that, and that's why I'm, why am I... Secondly, with respect to the property lines, we too have a, a, a survey, stamp survey that says this is the way the law is configured. And, and I'm happy to provide the board our title information. I have a deed with me today that was in the 1920s when this property was conveyed, and it expressly defines the lot to include that, the sort of the rectangular part, and expressly speaks to the, to the triangle piece. And it, and it concludes that the total area, and this is from 1920, it concludes that the total area is 5,687 and a half square feet. And we have proposed that our lot is 5,688. So with all due respect, I know Attorney Novak has a, a survey on his property that shows that his lot is rectangular. And so I can understand his concern. If, if his lot's rectangular, how can ours have the, the jaw? I have the evidence that shows that this is our lot. We have a stamp survey or saying this is our lot. I'm not quite sure how the board, first of all, whether it needs to reconcile that issue when you have a submitted plan from us stamped. But if you do, we're happy to, you know, provide information to whatever party is going to answer that question for you if you feel it needs to be answered. The last point I'd like to make is that with respect to our taking credit to the existing FAR of the building as we believe it existed, and we've, we've shown how it existed based on assessors' information, the survey that was done before the property was demolished. And I will check, we will check our numbers to make sure that they were correct. But assuming for a minute that they are correct, I don't think the question of whether that, any additions that were done, you know, in 1986 or in the 80s or 90s, as Attorney Novak mentioned, I don't think that's relevant to whether or not that can be counted. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 7, states that if real property has been improved by erection or alteration of one or more structures, and the structures or alterations have been in existence for a period of at least 10 years, and no notice of an action suit proceeding as to an alleged violation of this chapter, or of an ordinance or a bylaw adopted under this chapter, has been recorded in the registry of deeds in which the land is located, within a 10-year period from the date the structures were erected, then those structures shall be deemed for zoning purposes to be legally non-conforming structures, subject to Section 6, and any local ordinance or bylaw relating to non-conforming structures. What that tells us is if this stuff, structure was added to or, or altered in, in excess of 10 years ago, even if it wasn't done with a building permit, which we're still not agreeing that there wasn't a building permit issued, we've been able to get the same limited records that Attorney Novak has, but we've also been told that, you know, there is an issue with, you know, historical records in town, and some of them were destroyed, I guess, during flooding or other catastrophe. But, so I'm not saying that this was built without a building, a permit. But what I'm saying is, if it was, the law says that if it's been there for 10 years, and there's never been any appeal, enforcement action by anyone, the building inspector or anyone else, that after 10 years, those structures shall be deemed for zoning purposes to be legally non-conforming, subject to Section 6, and any local ordinance or bylaw relating to non-conforming structures. What that says is, we can count that area as pre-existing fire. Simple. Over 10 years. And I'll be happy to provide that to Town Council or the building inspector or whoever's going to be addressing these. And I will provide a copy to Mr. Novak.
So let's keep, I'd like to keep moving on.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just that one comment with respect, I just want to point one thing out because that, I agree with that, it was private property, but this deed that was shown here came from the town of Newbury. So it's not something that came from a private party. You can't take town-owned land by adverse possession or, the only way they lose it is if they date it out. And that's the nuance here that should be brought to your attention, that this is not a private lot. This was owned by the town of Newbury right up until 2013. So, you know, and at the end of the day, the, the engineer that did this block plan for us took this information from the town of Newbury's deed. I'm not arguing, it's not a big point, it's not a big encroachment, but I just think it's something that, where they're proposing these two large, you know, tall structures, that if in fact they're not entitled to this, they should not receive this credit if that's the case. And I'll do some further research, Mr. Chairman.
Understood. Thank you. People on the right side.
Thank you.
Your all side?
Yep.
Ma'am?
Yeah.
Your all side? All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against? No one? All right. So there's a lot going on here. This is a little different than normal. So as I had said, I have some questions for the building inspector in terms of the extension as being one. Two, I have questions for Town Council on condos or accessory apartments, or the understanding of, of the allowability of a two-family, and also the two, when it says two families, two families is usually a two-family structure and not two separate units. So I have some questions for Town Council as well. Did any of the board have any additional questions now we've heard for and against?
Would that include the dueling surveys too, Mr. Chairman?
We can ask the, the building inspector about the, I have that noted as well, about surveys and what he might have on record, and his understanding of that.
Susan, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
There are some written comments that should be, please write into the record.
All right. So we have Sanchez, we have Hunt, we have Loomis. It's the same one. Sanchez, the same one here. Christine Florio, you also wrote...
Yeah, I'll say.
Okay. A letter? And what is this?
And Hunt.
Know that, it just spoke. So if you would, tomorrow you start reading one and then...
You can just read them anyway. Like not all the name and address, you don't necessarily have to read the whole bunch.
Okay. The name and address.
This is from Samantha Christie, doesn't have an address. Oh, no, I'm sorry, this is from Paul and Susan Loomis. Letters on 10, 10th Street. One document concerns regarding a proposal erecting two homes at the location, making sure that it fully conforms to all zoning conservation and applicable requirements. We oppose the plan, does not fully conform. We understand the proposed plan, 10, 10th Street does not fully conform. There was an issue raised by an butter at the Conservation Commission meeting. We're concerned about the practicality and aesthetics of two small homes on such a small lot. Certainly would be out of character for the surrounding area. Our preference would be a single modest home that fully conforms. We'd like to see more detail on the proposed plan that was presented at the Conservation meeting to understand overall height layout so we can better judge how this will directly affect us.
Okay. The next letter is by Kevin Hunt. Unable to attend. Take fair to assume that the building permits were never issued for the two structures in question, one, the larger one bordered or actually approached on the Novak property to the north. It would seem that without a record of exemptions being granted to these buildings, if there Biggest concern is gombling up three or four properties that might have had illegal buildings on them and not hearing before you an argument that there's a precedent for the case. And he also has parking considerations for four cars on a small lot with two buildings and access for the street. Chief Sanchez?
Go for it. Okay. This is from Samantha Holt, I'm sorry, Carl Sanchez, 13, 10th Street, a butter. For, for the public comment regarding 10, 10th Street, February. I'm strongly object to proposal because it does not comply with PIOD district zoning and other record for requirements. Apparently two primary residents have been constructed on one lot, and the previous permit was unlawful. I believe town of Newbury is, it must not be approved until it meets the PIOD. I believe proposals voluntarily rebuild both buildings. They should be rebuilt to conform with the PIOD zoning district, conform with fire separation and parking requirements. These concerns are propelling for the following reasons. 10th Street is hardly a street, rather a 10-foot public right, right of way. Such emergency vehicles have difficult time assessing homes. Palm Island, Hunt, Newbury have experienced home fire, coastal winds across damage to a butters. What is the footprint of total buildings? Are they in compliance with PIOD? Is there sufficient parking for each building independent of the other? And what happens to two homes that are sold separately in terms of parking?
All righty. I think that covers it, Martha. We, and Christie, did we make sure we got, followed them right in? Mr. Duchene, do you have copies of these?
I do, yes. The administrator was kind enough to send them over. Thank you. Thank you for sending us.
So at this time, I think there are additional questions and clarifications at hand that we would like to ask or extend this or continue this, this hearing.
Certainly reasonable, Mr. Chairman. I have some homework to do as well and to provide you some additional information. So we're certainly appreciate continuing.
Any more questions from the board? Is there motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to continue the discussion regarding questions for the building inspector of Town Council on permits and other issues.
Okay.
We have to second the hearing to a time and date certain...
Right. So our next, when's our next meeting?
May 19.
May 19, Thursday night, 7:30 here at Town Hall. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Welcome to the passage of the hearing.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you on the 19th.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your attendance. Thank you, guys.
We need to get five cinders.
Do we need to sign five cinders? Yeah, we need to, we need to, I need to discuss it before I make a motion. This one? They're drafted by Town Council. Except for us, we need to discuss them. We can sign them. This one? They're drafted by Town Council. Except for us, we need to discuss them. We can sign them. This one? They're drafted by Town Council. Except for us, we need to discuss them. We can sign them. This one? They're drafted by Town Council. Except for us, we need to discuss them. We can sign them. Jack, you have this one?
Oh, thank you. I'll get those to Leslie.
Yes, we're done. But, just, just discuss this. Do you want to go? Any other comments?
I was going to comment about your man last night. About possibly extending...
So it's got to be made by the board of selectmen. So what I would ask you to do is just... Yeah, I'd like to think through the merits and understanding of that. Bylaws that were created specifically say that it would have to be changed. Planning Board would have to write the change. Select Board would have to approve it, and then, and then it would have to go before the city vote in order to change the bylaws. That said, there is a full review of the zoning that is going on happening now. So I think part of it is that in order to change this, that you just write a real simple letter that makes a recommendation to do so, and submit it to the planning board and submit it to the select board, and then it can be on its way. And then it can be on its way in terms of being discussed and approved. I don't have, you know, it is kind of hindered with the things that we do that we can't call each other and try to gain a better understanding or have some better insight as to what is going on. And that having just three of us at a time that can't communicate and advance the discussion or understanding is, you know, is hindering. And it seems that in my experience and I, eight, ten, eight years, how long have I known this? Nine years? That is, it becomes more and more challenging and new.
Where you going with my case then?
I don't oppose it. No, I mean, I'd like to be able to call somebody and just say, you know, I'm reading this and/or have you call me and say, Eric, I'm reading this. Is it either or, and/or but, or, you know, and have that.
I totally agree.
This case, we are the second with a favor, you could example of that. There's a lot of issues, I'm not even sure some of them belong before the zoning board, like the surveys and stuff. Shouldn't that get sorted out before it gets to us?
Yes, and, and we had previously taken a short effort. And we did do a few tweaks, but one of the things that we could do in our discussion as a board as a whole is try to look at the application and improve the application. The one thing I'd like to do is pull the forms out so that you have all the instructions here and you have form one, two, and three. And that's all you submit. Right now, the instructions and the forms all go together and just trying to figure out how to maybe simplify the application for the benefit of review and limiting paper. Right, so there's the application, that's one. Two, the recommendations that can be made on any of the zoning. And three, we need to set up a meeting with the planning board to have that discussion.
Right, but as, you know, town council has advised that that will happen sometime after, after town meeting.
Understood, and I think town council wanted to take a pass through this and maybe come up with a thing of, you guys might want to look at this, that, and this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Then we would have that, planning board would have that, we would have our own thoughts, planning board would have their own thoughts, and then we'd have a meeting and discuss that in order. So it is written in here, the three and the two alternates, so it would have to be changed somehow. Yeah, I'm not opposed to it, and then the town would have to vote on it. So if the town is figuring, okay, does it take five votes for me to do something, I might drop here at three.
It would be three, it would be three.
It would be majority of the board.
Yeah.
But you've got five people that are now voting as opposed to just three. I don't know, I'm just saying, I don't.
But if it's a special permit, it might requires, or it requires super majority, so that's four out of five.
Right, so then we get into understanding what.
So what's a finding, what's a special permit?
Exactly, and that needs to be super clear coming from the building inspector, exactly what he's denying against so that we know exactly what we're proving against. And there has been, there is language that is one of the things that might be cleared up in here is the term special permit and the term finding seem to be used interchangeably and understood when they are two separate words. And in the past, there hasn't been much discussion or splitting of pairs between somebody making an, an application, making an argument, and then the granting of a decision is in fact giving them, quote, a special permit finding. In the past. So there is a process, there is a process underway to improve the zoning bylaws. There is a process to change the zoning bylaws, and we just need to go through that. So I think, yeah, if you do, at some point, even if we agreed as a board, there do need, there does need to be some written letter or request to planning board and to the selectmen as to what needs being booked.
And that would be after town meeting in April, and would we have a town meeting in the fall that they could hold?
Well, things take time. This wouldn't happen for about a year in terms of process and discussing, and planning board has to write it.
They're two separate, if you're talking about the number of members of the board, that's, there's a general bylaw, which is chapter four, which just says that hereby is established a, a board of appeals to be appointed by the board of selectmen. It doesn't say number or anything, so.
I read it. It doesn't say. I read that somewhere, Mark, but I'll have to find it.
It might be somebody, someplace else, but at least we, chapter four, because it doesn't need a number. And that's a general bylaw, so that's the one.
But I thought you said it's earlier tonight, a minimum of three.
State statute.
Yeah.
It's a minimum of three.
Should I read it in the state statute then? Where it proposes a minimum of three and, and two alternates?
Might have, state statute allows the alternates.
Okay, so it's a good point, Elaine, and we'll, we'll have to consider that as we go forward. And now, as we go forward with town council's review, would be a good time to bring it up and ask the question. Okay. So the next item, it's by Cinder Avenue, Palm Island, in which we had a decision, made a decision. Chrissy has drafted up the decision, and it's here for review and approval. And if approved, no edits or proof, you'll sign. With minimal edits and text can be edited and we can move forward.
Should I bring up that question? And Chrissy has some questions herself.
Okay.
Okay, under section, number one, procedural history, number five. In the meeting minutes, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Page two. Page two. In the meeting minutes, the applicant mentioned that one of the direct abutters behind him, no name mentioned, was concerned about rodents. And if the house was demoed and rodents got out, the applicant agreed to bring in an exterminator. Do I need to put that as a butter comment even though it wasn't submitted? It was just discussed with the applicant and the applicant told you at the hearing on 217.
It's on record, it's on tape, you might as well put it in.
Okay.
It's also part of the building code, Chrissy, that it's part of the demo permit. When you pull a demo permit, you have to agree to do rodent control.
Oh, okay.
Just state statute, so kind of a no-brainer. And it costs about a hundred bucks, so.
Under section three, page three of six, findings and determinations, one G. Okay, my question, oh, I'm confused about that, thirty-four feet, eight and one-eighth number, when they were saying it's architectural versus engineering. So the last sentence, height will remain conforming but increases from 11.9 feet to 34 feet, eight and an eighth inches. Is that a correct measurement?
Well, what, 11.9, um, feet. We could change, we could figure that out.
Be like, what, ten, three-quarters or something?
Yep. Five eighths. 11.9 feet equals 11 feet, 10 and 13 sixteenths.
Well, right in between is my right.
Do we need to do that for some reason?
So I keep the 34 feet, eight and one-eighth inch?
You might as well just change the 11.9 to 11 foot, 10 and 13 sixteenths and keep it all in feet and inches. 13 sixteenths.
I'm gonna go measure that one.
Point of somebody making the statement and to that effect and then putting it as part of the decision, which has been recorded on the deed. There's a medical, someone would want to check it, it's right there.
Okay.
I was thinking of the other, yeah, I'm sure we're gonna have.
Yep. Feet and inches, got it.
I was gonna change the feet and inches to decimal. I think it was a decimal.
Okay.
Okay, under the exhibits on page five of six, we added the, what they're supposed to record at the registry of deeds with the decision. Let's see, do I need to mention, so the architectural plan, it was initialled by Chairman Savan and Architect Scott Brown at the public hearing, but not dated. Do I have to write the actual, architectural plan set, initialed, revised by Chairman Savan and Architect Scott Brown? Or can I just say architectural plan set, Simmons Residence? I didn't know if I had to be technical because I have to supply that initial plan set for him to record, so I figured if I have the right wording.
You could say the plan set, but the plan set usually has a date on it so that we understand that if there were multiple plan sets that were, were looking at one specific and that has a date on it. So probably should have dated.
But it would be whatever the revision date, if there, if there are multiple revisions, whatever that.
Well, I know that, but they were discussing something, I'll go back in the notes, but they made a comment, a revision that wasn't, instead of some revised. They just initialed it and crossed something out.
Right, but that plan still had a date.
That's true, okay.
You know, plan set dated for one slash 22. You could say revision three, but at that point, that plan has a date that was submitted. All, all plans have dates, have revision dates, and so there is a date that identifies the plan that we revised and initially.
Okay.
Okay.
Understood, yeah. And those were my only questions on it.
So the special findings, number two, special findings pursuant to Massachusetts 40A and 97 dash, pursuant to general law, chapter 40A, comma, and ninety, section 97 dash four D, five C, one, not increase the footprint of the existing structure. That's, he's demolishing the whole thing, it's it's really F. He's, he's demolishing and rebuilding after a finding. So you see that sentence?
Yes.
So it's Massachusetts general law is this whole type of separate thing, so after the comment, it should say, and Newbury bylaw, section 97 dash four D, five F. Or 97 dash four D, five F of the Newbury zoning bylaws, zoning those board make decisions or first all in part modify in the order of decisions, in this case, definitely, Mr. President. The, and special permit really should be finding at that point.
Create a finding.
Create a finding to allow for the raising of a pre-existing not informing dwelling and a garage in 5 Cinder Avenue and to construct, and the construction of a new dwelling on Mileings with an increased height and making requests the applicant council, oh, use the filing. List on setbacks. List the lot increase. Says it's not more detrimental, some keeping with the neighborhood. Sorry, that's my stutter. And then number five should be finding as well. And I would just read through the rest of it. Chrissy, see if you could do a word search for special permit and make sure that it's finding under that section, which is specifically for demolition. All right, are you any questions?
Yeah.
Jack, if you have any questions? Okay, okay. So is there a motion to accept with edits?
Make a motion to accept 5 Cinder with cemented, thank you. I had a brain freeze here for a second.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Can we sign the last?
Yeah, if nothing, if the pages aren't gonna change.
This one will change.
So I would propose that we sign the last page, that Chrissy makes the amendments, the amendments go back by email.
Yep.
But each of the three of us has to return an email saying, you know, for you, etc., as noted. Then upon receiving three separate emails, you can attach the signature picture.
Excellent. Just to Chrissy.
Just to Chrissy, not to everybody. Send, yes, send your, do you mind if I follow your blank pen? Put my green signature on that. All right, there's one more, special issues, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, in favor?
Aye.